Madame Chair, I'd like to make a declaration on number sixteen six Hiawatha Road. I believe I know the owner based on the name. I can't confirm that since it's a virtual hearing. So I'd like to put it as a caution. I'm going to make a declaration of interest. Yes. My name is Gloria Apostolou. I'm sorry about the last connection.
No. No.
Madam Chair, I think this is a very straightforward application, so I'd like to bring forward a motion for approval. I noted it's a two-story rear addition. It is matching what is attached to the attached neighbor. It is not a significant size addition, and in my view, this meets the four tests. So when the motion is for approval, it will be subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Yes, Edward Lee here, agent representing the owner. Great, thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, committee members. Goes without saying that the hospitality industry is going through difficult times. And everyone knows outdoor dining has been the lifeline for restaurants to survive thus far. Some background on this file. The application was submitted at the end of 2019. And as expected, the file was pre-circulated in early 2020 for comments from city staff. If you refer to the filing date of the majority of the objection letters, you'll note that most of them are from January and February earlier this year. This was before we had a chance to receive pre-circulation comments back from planning. It was also during this time that the business owners learned that a member of the Ozzington Community Association spread the news amongst the community, even set up a Facebook group page, essentially to stir up the neighbors to fight this application. I'll spare the committee the details of the Facebook page. But it's safe to say that the moderator of this Facebook page has been on a mission to essentially shut this down from the start. The restaurant owners even received text and email messages directly claiming that he was going to get the entire neighborhood against us for the simple reason that we did not consult with him and the community group before filing the application. There are also claims that we were taking advantage of a loophole to get this patio pushed through, which is of course untrue, as we have made concessions during pre-circulation and are before you today requesting these minor variances. To clarify, the site plan that everyone is looking at now is the current site plan after pre-circulation. The superseded plan is available. We went in for the original plan intending to hear from city planning and concede as required based on their feedback. The minor variances that we are now requesting are specifically for patio setback for residential lots and also for additional operable window area for existing windows that are not permitted to be opened at the moment. Contrary to what many objectors have claimed in their letters, the use of an outdoor patio and the size of the patio are both permitted by zoning. It's just because of the setbacks that we require relief from the bylaw. Back in March, the patio plans were revised after constructive back and forth with planning staff. The revised site plan, which was uploaded on March 17th, so right around when COVID happened, were now deemed acceptable by planning to move forward to scheduling. And the key minor variance that we eliminated was to reduce the patio size to comply with zoning. The setbacks from residential lots on the south and east sides were also increased from six and eight point two meters to nine point two and nine point four meters. This was essentially the most that we could squeeze the patio because of the location of existing mechanical equipment. The revisions to patio size were also coordinated with planning staff to ensure that the existing windows where we are requesting permission to have operable windows to ensure that they would all be contained within the 1.8 meter patio enclosure. This will mitigate any sound traveling beyond the patio walls and should the restaurant decide to have a few windows open in the summertime for natural ventilation. Additionally, we have no objection letter from transportation services regarding the parking minor variance. And as you can see, the staff report, which was received only on Monday, recommends the standard conditions for operating hours, restrictions on music and sound, and privacy fencing with the additional recommendation of a two-year term. We of course accept all these conditions, but I would like to just point out quickly that I was the agent for a rear patio application similar in size and context around the corner on Queen Street that was recently heard by a Tobukku York panel and was approved with a three-year conditional term. Committee Chairman Michael Clark cited that a three-year term would be more reasonable for businesses to justify the capital investment required to build a patio during COVID times when most are just trying to keep the lights on. Given the cost of commercial C of A applications times two and extended hearing timelines, a new application would essentially need to be filed as early as next year to allow for potential continuity of the patio should it be re-approved before the end of the term. I believe that adopting the conditions recommended by planning staff does meet the four tests, being in a mixed-use area that encourages live-work, eating, shopping, all within the same blocks. I believe that this is a desirable addition to the neighborhood and it does meet the general intent. Yeah, yeah, I'm very aware of the five minutes. So just wanted to, yeah. So obviously, while a lot of the objection letters do specifically state that the actual numbers of the minor variances we are requesting are not minor relative to the 30-meter setback, which is the new citywide bylaw. I do believe that it is reasonable based on the. Oh, am I? Okay. To make, long story short, restaurants need patios. We need places to eat. This restaurant was voted number one new restaurant in Toronto by Toronto Life last year. So you can imagine the worst time of the year to get such accolades. The magazine came out right when COVID shutdowns happened. And essentially, that's just to show that this is a fine dining restaurant. It's not intended to be a bar. Okay. Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm anticipating lots of comments from the residents. So I'll save the rest for my response. Yes. Thank you.
I am. Can you hear me? Sure, my name is David Nelligan, N-E-L-I-G-A-N, and I'm solicitor acting on behalf of the Ozzington Community Association. Thanks. The Ozzington Community Association opposes the variances required for both the patio use and the operable windows, which in our submission do not satisfy any of the four tests under the Planning Act. So I'll go in order. Number one, the proposal does not conform to the general intent of the official plan. Subject property is designated as mixed-use and is immediately adjacent to the neighborhoods designated as lands to the east and the south, separated only by narrow laneways. The OP requires that development or intensification of mixed-use areas that are adjacent to or close to neighborhoods will be carefully controlled so that neighborhoods are protected from negative impact. That has not been done with this proposal. The application seeks to impose an incompatible patio use on the edge of a residential neighborhood area that together with the proposed large open windows will result in an unacceptable noise, odor, and light impacts on the local residents. On this basis of the OP test alone, the application should fail. Number two, the proposal does not conform to the general intent of the zoning bylaw. In 2009, the city undertook its Ozzington restaurant study to address actual and potential land use conflicts on Ozzington Street. It resulted in a number of changes to the citywide zoning bylaw, including the variances sought today. The study specifically addressed patios and staff reviewed complaints about noise, overlook, privacy, cigarette smoke, and lighting impacts of outdoor patios on nearby residential properties. And they found that the existing bylaw restrictions were insufficient to mitigate those impacts. So the zoning bylaw was amended to prohibit any new rear yard and rooftop patios in the area without exception and to limit any future patio flanking a residential street to 50% of the depth of the building in which a restaurant is located, as measured from the front wall, in order to restrict levels of noise that travel down the residential streets. Those regulations were further carried forward in the new citywide comprehensive zoning bylaw, which does not permit outdoor patios within 30 meters of a residential zone. The current proposal situates the patio only 9.2 meters from the closest residentially zoned lot. The study also reviewed the size of operable doors and windows on rear and flanking walls. And the bylaw was amended to limit the size of those windows in order to prevent sound transmission beyond the walls of any future establishment. Rarely do we have a case where the intention of the bylaw is spelled out so clearly. In this case, the city identified a problem with patios. They studied it. They recommended changes to the bylaw to address those problems which were adopted. This proposal now seeks to completely undermine this clear intention. And accordingly, the proposal must fail this branch of the test. Number three, the proposal is not minor. The application before the committee proposes a patio that is less than 10 meters from a residential zone, which is more than 20 meters closer than the bylaw allows. It proposes to extend the limit on side-lot patios from a maximum of 50% depth of the lot to 95% depth of the lot, which is a near complete renunciation of the restriction of the bylaw. When combined with the large operable windows that open onto the patio, which is a request tripling the existing permission, the noise from the restaurant will significantly and directly impact the residential neighborhood and the residents' use and enjoyment of their property. The patio will also contribute to light trespass and reduced privacy, as well as an increase in congregation of waiting and leaving diners and incidental passersby in the laneways abutting people's homes. These impacts are not minor, nor are they mere apprehensions. They are reported and studied impacts based on former and existing patios in the area. Number four, the proposal is not desirable for the appropriate development of the lands. We recognize that during the COVID pandemic, it's become increasingly important for restaurants to provide outdoor space until indoor dining is safe again. But the city and the province have already responded to this need through the development of the Cafe TO program as well as a ministerial zoning order which relaxes the city's restrictions on patio uses. Both of these initiatives, though, direct patios to the front of a restaurant to be located on the sidewalk or the boulevard or in parking areas at the front flangeage. Neither of these initiatives have changed the prohibitions on patios within 30 meters of a residential zone. We're sympathetic to the plight of restaurants, but we are not aware of any statutory authority or direction from the province that minor variances are to be used to offer COVID relief. There are mechanisms in place other than this committee to address these concerns. A patio at this restaurant may be appropriate at the front of the restaurant to take advantage of these city initiatives, but the current proposal remains completely undesirable. I know I'm at five minutes, but I just want to conclude by saying that I reviewed the staff report and the recommended conditions. And I just want to note that none of them address the variance for operable windows and that the mitigative measures that they recommend, such as the fencing around the patio, are the very same measures that the Ozzington Restaurant Study already found were insufficient. If they were insufficient then, then they remain insufficient now. So based on all of that, we strongly encourage the committee to refuse this application. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Yes, I am. Am I audible? Okay. My name is Benj, B-E-N-J, Helle, H-E-L-L-I-E, and I live at 44 Argyle Street. Good morning. Thanks to the committee for this opportunity to depute. As the historian of the local community association and a moderator of a discussion board we have sponsored for many years, I have paid a lot of attention over the last decade or so to the way Ozzington works. And walking my dog, I have seen every nook and cranny of the area at all hours of the day and night. One thing this experience has made me confident in is the wisdom of the zoning regime arrived at through the 2009 Restaurant Study, which grandfathered a modest number of rear yard patios adjacent to the residential zone while prohibiting new ones. Where the grandfathers aren't, as I know from walking around at night and keeping abreast of neighborhood chatter, the late-night jollity goes on its merry way while good folks try to get some peace and quiet, escape annoyance, protecting neighborhoods' lands from adverse impacts in line with the intent of the official plan. Where the grandfathers are, there is nuisance and tension. All of this exactly in line with the predictions motivating the 2009 zoning. Another thing I know from my historical investigations is that the proposed site is about the least desirable land for a back patio in the entire neighborhood. The property is unique among Ozzington storefronts in also occupying a laneway corner, making it strategically positioned to annoy residents along two streets, Argyle to the south and Givens to the east, not to mention the dozens of folks in the Halton Townhouse condos to the north who perch right above it. Obviously, we are all sympathetic to the plight of the hospitality industry during the pandemic. But perhaps to reiterate some points that Mr. Nelligan made, but to the best of my knowledge, the assistance provided by the three levels of governments does not include redefining the four tests for a minor variance. The proposals here for the patio and large open windows quite clearly fail to meet the four tests and the associated requests for minor variances should be rejected. I noted also that my neighbor Gavin, pardon me, Manning wanted me to state the following, quote, "I want to live in a community where residents and businesses can coexist in a peaceful manner. I want to support local businesses, but we must also respect the privacy and noise level of local residents, and this will not happen if we completely disregard our current zoning bylaws, which were set to provide such harmony." Thank you.
I have one, Madam Chair. I don't know if it's fair to ask you this question, Mr. Helle, but I was going to ask Mr. Manning, and I gather he's not speaking. He submitted some photographs of the windows that are currently on the restaurant. And I'm wondering if the windows that he submitted, are they they're currently in existence, but are they currently illegal? His contention was that they were not permitted by the bylaw and therefore variance number two to the old bylaw would need to be approved for them to continue to operate. And I'm just not clear if that's the case. I don't know if it's fair to ask you, but perhaps you may know the answer to that.
I believe that, yes, the exception 1782 to standard set two, which is the old zoning bylaw amendments that came out of the 2009 study, that does in fact limit the total space of operable windows to four square meters. What is requested is that approximately 12 square meters of operable windows be permitted. And the windows that we're talking about here are the ones that are in Mr. Manning's photos are the ones that are requested to be opened.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Yes, my name is Connie Gibson, and I live at 52 Argyle Street, directly behind the proposed patio. Thank you. I did submit a letter when the proposal first came out, and I resubmitted a new letter more recently. So I'm not going to propose to reread my letter and all the reasons that this would have such a detrimental impact on myself, my daughter, who lives with me, and the community. The negative impact of having a patio nine meters behind my house and why this fails the four tests, in my opinion. I would like to speak on a more personal note. When I moved here a year and a half ago, the restaurant in question did not exist. And I saved for eight years to buy this house. And I moved here and chose this neighborhood because I love the mixed nature of the neighborhood, but also the balance that it strikes between the residents that live here and the commercial enterprises. I am sympathetic to the impact of COVID in a huge way and the devastating impact it's had on restaurants in particular. I have, since the COVID pandemic hit, been supporting solely local businesses. I shop at no big box stores. I've been trying to support all local businesses, including restaurants, shops, butcher shops, et cetera. The COVID has impacted me personally in that my daughter works in a restaurant in the area and in fact has been directly impacted, being laid off in the beginning, called back, fighting for hours as all the serving staff is struggling to make a living. But restaurants and bars have adapted. Some of them have been very creative, putting out meal kits, cocktail kits, virtual sessions with mixologists and chefs and carrying merchandise, turning themselves into wine shops. Patios are not the only answer. And frankly, the patios are closing now. My daughter's is closing next week. It's winter time. There's nothing that a patio can do to save this business now. And frankly, by the time that they reopen in the spring, we are going to be on the other side of this. I'm sure you've all read the recent developments from Moderna and Pfizer, both of whom have now been through clinical testing and shown a ninety-five percent effective rate. You've seen the Canadian government is working on the plans to roll it out early in the new year. Production is ramping up. I'm not saying that the pandemic's going to be over in the spring, but we are going to be on the other side of this. So I really don't believe it's appropriate to grant this patio on that basis. I think we need to look long term, and I would ask you to please not sacrifice the good and sound principles for balancing commercial and residential interests in this neighborhood to the interests of this particular patio.
Couple of notes I just took that I'll address. No, no, I'm just going to respond to some of the comments that were made. Yes. Yep. Yes, absolutely understand. One item I'd like to clarify is the existing window condition. The existing windows that are there now were permitted as of right when the restaurant was opened. It was actually something that was missed by the zoning examiner. He did not take note of the fact that these windows were noted to be operable, and during the inspection process, this was caught, and essentially the windows were required to remain closed. As a result of this, we had the intentions of applying for this patio in the future. So that's the reason why this minor variance to allow additional operable window area is one of the listed minor variances we are seeking. Is the other thing, I mean, I live in the neighborhood. I sympathize with everyone's concerns, and I have also seen the rise of Ozzington's debauchery on the weekends. There are some establishments on Ozzington that give all restaurants and bars a bad name. And, you know, I'd like to reassure the committee that this establishment is not one of these bars on Ozzington that seem to have no limits on noise, and I sympathize with the Halton residents who live on Ozzington. That development was built well before Ozzington gentrified. And to the neighbors on Argyle, you know, we all know the Golden Turtle patio across the street. This patio has license, and it's always operated respectfully. It's obviously a food-focused restaurant, and I'd like to stress that Favorite's Barbecue, our restaurant, is also food-focused. And reminder that we are accepting planning staff recommendations for limited operating hours. Obviously, no music, amplified sound. And while the patio fence, you know, may not do enough to satisfy Mr. Helly and Mr. Nelligan's claims that the restaurant study concluded that it was not sufficient, I do believe that it will provide more privacy than what is there now with the existing windows. And the fact that everybody has fences on the other side of the laneway and garages, and the most important fact that the restaurant is just asking for an opportunity to prove to the community that it will operate a respectful patio. And obviously, if they do not, over the course of the term, you know, when we're back in committee, you know, if it's a two-year patio, then, you know, we'll look back and say that it was a COVID patio. But anything that can help the restaurant survive in the short term, in the long run, will be appreciated.
No, I don't.
Madam Chairman, this is a difficult application. I can see advantages and disadvantages on both sides, but in summary, I think Mr. Nelligan's presentation sways me the most. There was an agreement that there was a problem in the area. There was a study to look into the problem and possible solutions. The agreed-upon solutions were incorporated into a bylaw, into the bylaw. And what we have before us today is a request to alter the bylaw that is the result of that consultation and those changes. I feel, as Mr. Nelligan had said, that this particular application does not does not respect the intent and purpose of the bylaw, and on that basis, I'm unable to support it. And I would like to move or regretfully remove that or move that the application be refused.
Madam Chair, I'm going to weigh in on this one as well. This is, to me, a very difficult situation. I do sympathize with the restaurant industry and the challenges they're facing. But when I look at it in a, you know, notwithstanding the challenges, I do think the fact that this patio is on a laneway makes it also, it zasparates the situation. Often you see restaurants, patios, not always abutting laneways. Sometimes they're on a corner a lot, on a street. So I think, in my view, the separation distance is not adequate. And I agree with Mr. Knipful that it is pushing the envelope too much and that the impact on the neighbors will definitely be too great. So I'm going to second his motion for refusal.
I'll just jump in briefly. I understand the concerns that have been brought up, too. I'm more supportive of the application. I think the conditions proposed by planning staff are enough to, you know, to see if this will work. I think the operating hours and the two-year limit, I think, are positive. So I'm supportive of the application. That's right. That's correct, yeah.
Hi, it's Adam Tom here. Certainly. Okay, would you like me to speak on all three variances? So, I'll give some, okay, I'll give some quick background. The owners of this has purchased this property, which was an original storefront along Gerard. They're a family of five, and it's important to note that they, while they wanted to, the building is in disrepair, and they wanted to live there. It was also important to them to maintain a commercial address in the neighborhood, in the community. So they're going to great lengths not to just create a residential building where there had been a store on the street. So in order to fit the massing together, we did our best to contain it within the existing building footprint. And you could note in the renderings that where we did, where we are asking for to extend the building to the east beyond its as of right, we've pushed the massing away from the northern property line to allow as much light and air to the only neighbor to the north there. The other variances relate to maintaining the existing floor to ceiling height in the store at grade level. So we're not changing that from what is the existing commercial space. And the third variance relates to the fact that we have these mixed-use situation where we have residential, because of the building's orientation along Gerard Street, we're allowed to get a very distinct residential entrance along the back of Gerard, whereas the commercial entrance is on Howland, where it's always been. So they're quite separated there. There in that rendering, you can see the effort we've done to pull the building away from the property line where it is at its furthest-most point to the east edge. And that's only a two-story volume, whereas we kept the smaller third-story component as far away from the back edge as well, again, to and from the front of the building to allow the least amount of shadow and effect on neighboring properties. But I'm good. Yes, I am. Okay. Okay. Oh, of course, we'd like to hear from. No, the other one we said. Well, maybe a good idea. They're doing their best with the. With the complicated. Looking just. Bringing back. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, now. Good. Thank you.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. That not did disconnect. I did disconnect the microphone. I I heard you guys the whole time. Just I I guess you weren't able to hear me. Yes, so my name is Thomas Bural. I'm the agent and applicant for the homeowner. Of two hundred two.
Madam. Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Growl, it there looks like there's already currently a garage on site. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and in terms of it looks like it's two stories. So I'm just wondering what the height comparison is of the current garage in comparison to what you're proposing.
So the current garage is sixteen foot six inches. So it's a difference of about three feet. Because the proposed will be nineteen feet, two inches, so just shy of three feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do. Thanks. I'm I'm just trying to understand the angular plane. With the laneway suite and the setback from the main house is somewhere around four and a half meters. But on drawing. A six point one, there's showing a dotted line, which I'm assuming is the the angular plane line. But in my head, it should be further back into the house into the laneway suite because of the separation distance required. Could you talk about that, please?
Yes, so that is the angular plane. I myself wasn't too sure what was meant when I first received the notice. So when I talked to Nadia, she walked me through it and she told me to on the side to draw that in. And that basically it's that triangle that's five foot one by six foot one, that would have had to be at a forty-five degree angle. That's how I understood it.
Okay, but my understanding and maybe the committee members can weigh in as well. But I thought that that had to be drawn from a point seven point five meters back from the the wall of the the rear wall of the main house. And that's not that doesn't seem to be right here.
I can check because I do have the drawing here for me. It is. It is seven. Yeah, it is. If we if you look at the site plan, it's not. Seven foot five from the first story existing framing addition. It's from the main building, the one that has three stories. It's from there, the seven point five.
Okay, I I understand. Thanks.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
I'll jump in and I think I wouldn't mind a little discussion around this. I don't have any issues with the the basement unit. So variances three to five, I think that's that's fully fine and is a measured and desirable thing to happen on the property. But I am concerned about the the laneway suite and with that combined with the the rest of the development on site. For me, it feels like a bit of overbuilding, so I'm inclined to refuse variances one and two. with that combined with the the rest of the development on site. I for me, it feels like a bit of overbuilding. So I'm inclined to refuse variances one and two and permit three to five.
I'd like to weigh in as well. Sorry. Um, I share Mr. Reed's concern. I I don't have any problem with the the revision to or the variance to provide access to the basement. I do think that the laneway suite, as Mr. Reed indicated, combined with all the other development on the site tends to look very dense. And as the people across the road have indicated, they feel it's a bit imposing and I'm I'm inclined to agree with them. And so if Mr. Reed was to bring forward a motion as he suggested, I would be supportive.
Okay, I'm happy to put forward a motion to approve variance requests three to five and and deny one and two.
And then the development engineering condition doesn't apply. Is that correct? Because it only applies to the ones that you're not recommending.
That's right.
I'd be happy to second that.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Sedanya Thomas Sella. I'm counsel on behalf of the applicants Fernbrook Homes Strawn Limited and Fernbrook Homes Strawn Two Limited.
I do.
I have one. I have one. Sorry, Peter. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that you're aware of the community planning request for a two-year limit to this approval and if if that works from your perspective.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. We are aware. We don't have an objection to it. In fact, our covering letter had requested that the variance be be limited to three years. We had filed this application earlier in twenty twenty. So at the time, we were thinking we probably needed somewhere in around three years. And now that it's taken nearly a year to get before the committee, understandably so under circumstances, the two years does work. Thank you for that opportunity.
Yes, the the BA report tends to argue for a reduction in parking, but the arguments that are made are for appear to be for a permanent reduction, whereas the application is for a temporary reduction. Can you clarify? Perhaps it's they're just being overly zealous. But if I read that that report in isolation, it sounds like this is a request for a permanent reduction, whereas what you what you have before us is a temporary reduction.
Uh, thank you, sir. Through you, Madam Chair. I I think that's a fair assessment. The the idea was to treat this as though we were still asking for, you know, to to have the support that would be required in support of this reduction in parking, whether it's for two years or on a permanent basis. We wanted to be sure we had the the documentation necessary in order to to demonstrate that even on a temporary basis, if it had been on a permanent basis, that the 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 parking ratio that was being requested was appropriate. So it it in to section three point two point four of that BA group report makes reference to the temporary nature of the reduction. I appreciate, though, that perhaps it wasn't it wasn't as clear in their report as as perhaps it could have been.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll. I'm happy to put forward a motion. I think that this is a well thought out and well supported temporary solution to a construction related issues that that are going on. And I think the the BA report was was quite clear in in that this is an easily kind of handled issue from the the short term perspective. So I move to approve subject to that this be the approval be limited to to two years.
Uh, yes, this is Howard Heinzman. Madam Chairman, I think that the proposal before us is 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 sensitive to the neighborhood at the and the character in the area. I think it reflects an overall approach to to residential development. I think it's quite reasonable and I would like to move approval of the application subject to the planning department condition came in the supplementary agenda about limiting variance number four to only the bay windows.
Okay, yeah, I know. I I always use I always choose the same number. I've been on since nine. My apologies. My apologies for the confusion. Good morning, Madam Chair members. Uh, my name is Ida Evangelis on behalf of the owners of one forty-seven Euclid Avenue. What we have in front of you is we currently we are proposing an addition alteration to the existing home. We are the home currently has a rear addition. We're adding a second story, a partial addition and a full third story addition. We are introducing two units. Unit one is a partial basement with the main floor and unit two is two levels, second and third floor. Four bedrooms. We would like this area. It's going to be long term rental units for families. This particular neighborhood has a diversity of residential, institutional, commercial uses, all within walking distance. As you see from the photos that I presented, what we are proposing here is characteristic to what is in the neighborhood. You'll see many three stories, many of them with main wall height. You also see the modern home. The variances that we are asking for are related to an existing situation. And I believe that I have addressed there. We did receive a a letter of concern from the neighbor across the street. And I believe that I respectfully addressed all her comments. And we have no comments from planning, forestry or transportation. And I respectfully submit that the proposal, as it is in front of you, meets the forecast.
Hello? Hi, it's Sklar, S C H K L A R, Lois. One forty A Euclid Avenue. Okay, I'm gonna read them. I'm I'm basically not opposed to the variances of the property at one forty-seven Euclid. However, I do have concerns and I need a few assurances respectfully in writing that I request and to be signed by the owner of the property. I am concerned that I cannot find the contact information for roaming properties on the web. I see they have an address in London, England, but no Canadian address. Ida has assured me that Rome is a private Canadian corporation. She did send me proof of registration, but the O C N was erased. I would like this corporation to be transparent and request proof of their existence from the committee. Okay, I I'm. But what well, I had tried with that with getting the property, the property owners, and I certainly did not get that resolved. So that's upsetting to not know who is actually doing owning it and who's building it. So that is a big issue for me. Well, what are my what are my alternatives? Who can I go to? Well, I've tried that. Right, but I'm sure this has come up before and there must be an alternative person or people that I could get in contact with because that leaves me completely without any rights. So I have to get a lawyer and and go. Okay, well, then let me get maybe what you're saying is none of my concerns are addressed, can be addressed. Is that what you're saying? Okay, so the the Ida has just said that there are two units that are going to be put into this. Is that part of the variance? Would that be considered part of the variance? Okay, so that is this good. And then she says that she says there are two. There's two levels, but there are four families that can live there. Is that correct? It can be rented out. Right, well, have I don't have it from. I mean, I'm not an architect, but from what I can see, it does. It looks like they're being respectful of the space that's there. Um, I realize that it's going to add another story on, but I mean, that does happen in the neighborhood. So that's I'm not objecting to that. But what but what I'm hearing from you is that I really have no recourse in terms of, for example, the the place has been run as an Airbnb for for quite a long time now. And I I I know that an owner is supposed to live there for Airbnb. And I realize that's not your problem. Okay, well, maybe that's who I should call about the other. Well, it sounds like I've wasted my time this morning. And yours. No, I think I made that clear at the very beginning, that I did not have, I did not object to it, but what I did object, to have a hard time with, is not knowing who the property owner is, and also the, the property manager that they've been using so far. So there are a lot of different issues, but obviously you cannot address those. Sorry, sorry, I don't understand, you're breaking up. Well, yeah, it'll be interesting if there's a "them." Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have addressed all the questions. You know, with identity theft, I cannot put, it's, it's private information. I did share an excerpt from the Ontario Corporation number, the Corporation's Information Act. And I can't put this online, you know, this is private information. With all the identity thefts that are going on, it's not fair to the owner. The owner is more than willing to come out and talk to the neighbor. I've addressed all of the questions. Right now, it's, they're 28, beyond 28-day rental periods. We are looking for a new property management company. All of those, I have addressed, all of those, I have asked, sorry, I have answered all the questions that you saw in your letter ahead of time. And I am more than willing, and as you know, I'm more than willing, I'm very forthright on sharing information. So this is something that I will deal with, myself and the owner. I will personally go over and meet Lois, and just to bring a comfort level around the whole situation.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to jump in on this one. I, in my view, this one meets the four tests. The, the proposed construction is, as evidenced through the variances, they're asking for very minimal depth and height variance, as well as FSI increases. And Ms. Evangelista has provided photos of precedents in the area where there are their three-story homes. So I think this fits in with what is currently happening in the neighborhood. And I'd like to bring forward a motion for approval of the application without any condition.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to comment. I, I'm happy to second the motion, because I think the variances are very minor and are not creating an imposition in the community. What I think is regrettable is that the lack of any articulation on the front of the building makes the building look much more imposing and larger than it needed to. I think a different approach to the elevations would have been desirable. But notwithstanding that, the variances are minor, and I think, as stated, meet the four tests, and therefore I'd second the motion. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dana Cossage. I'm from Hiatus Design, and I am representing the owner, Melissa Seim, at 282 Highfield Road. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Um, uh. Okay. Um, no, the only thing I would, would add is that this young couple with a growing family wants to stay in the neighborhood. They've got a close-knit community, friends, and a fantastic school. So if you could just take that into consideration when you review, that would be the only thing I'd like to add.
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, unless anybody has any questions, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to forestry condition number two. I think this is a sensitive introduction into the community. Clearly meets the four tests and is relatively minor in nature.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is David Smith. I'm here representing the homeowners of 64 Tiverton Avenue.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to provide some comments on this one. This one, in my view, is a very sensitively designed, I believe, addition at the back. It's filling in on the, on the side, a space between the two properties. I don't have an issue with that as well, but addition at the back. I think it fits in with the neighborhood, and we have no objections from, from heritage planning in terms of its impact on the heritage value of the property. So I'm happy to bring forward a motion for approval of this application.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, committee. This is bum dot Ben Baghdadi. I'm the architect and applicant for this project.
I'm happy to bring forward a motion. I think that this is, like the previous couple applications, this is a sensitive project that is modest and not trying to do too much. And I think the impacts on the neighbors are negligible. And I think it does meet the four tests. And I'm really pleased to see that the applicant has taken the comments of community planning and altered their proposal to reflect those concerns and improve it. So I move to approve, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry, I just unmuted myself. I'm Martin Rendell, I'm the owner's representative. Yeah, it might help if staff could put up my original letter of September 16th. I'll use some of that to describe this. For the information of committee, in response to the objection letters that were filed, my client and his consultants have prepared some alternatives to this, which I'll discuss, but I'm gonna just start in terms of describing what the application is. I filed the letter, but I understand your procedures don't allow that material to be presented to you, so I'll, I'll speak to it. The variance in question is for the black structure you see in the picture. I'm not revising the variances, no. So the structure is the, the black structure there with the white door on it, which encloses mechanical equipment. And it's heating and air conditioning equipment. You can see on the roof, to the left and the right of the, that structure, there are two air conditioning compressors that are unenclosed. The equipment within that structure is not designed to be outdoors without an enclosure. That's why the enclosure was, was put on. There's a second photo, two pages down, that staff could scroll to, which show you the inside of the equipment. Yeah, right there. So it's an air handling unit, it's a humidifier, et cetera, and those are linked into the, one of the air conditioning compressors on the roof. So the variance here is for the fact that rooftop equipment cannot be enclosed unless the building is 15 meters or higher. This house is around 11 meters in height, so the variance is for the enclosure of the structure. In response to the, the concerns of the residents objecting to the, the structure and its enclosure, my client and their consultants have reviewed various options, one of which is to redistribute the equipment you're looking at in photo number three, to basically, which would result in the reduction in the height of the enclosure by about half of its height. It would reduce its height from 1.8 meters to about 0.89 meters, 72 inches down to about 35. So that equipment, to be clear, would be replaced on the roof. It would still need to be enclosed, but the height of the enclosure is half of, one can consider it half of what you see there. I did submit plans to staff showing the difference in the two, but again, I can't show them to you, I can't, clearly you can't see them, but staff do have them. So in terms, oh, there they are, no, that's not the, that's the original plans. So the, the enclosure you see there, the plans I submitted show that that is reduced in height to, as I said, 0.89 meters, which is higher than the unenclosed air conditioning compressor on the roof, which is sort of where, towards the, the front. So that, I'm, that is not an amendment to the application. I'm presenting that to the committee, and its consideration of the enclosure as an option that, that could happen. Procedurally, should the committee approve the variance, the condition could be that it be at the reduced height that I've just described for you. So that's one option. The other option, which sticks with the variance for the enclosure, relates to some conditions that Mr. Bronskill had recommended. And I understand he'll be speaking later, but basically approving the variance as submitted for the enclosure of that equipment, but limiting that that structure provide no access, the size be limited, et cetera. And my clients agreeable to that. The last option, and I'm only mentioning it for the information of the committee, will not require a variance, and is simply for my client to remove that equipment and replace it with equipment designed to be unenclosed and on the roof. There is no height limit in the bylaw for that type of equipment. That equipment would not be visually or acoustically screened or shielded, but, you know, that does exist. So in summary, the, certainly the second option that I've presented to you is a sincere effort by the clients to address the concerns of the neighbors, and I think is a reasonable matter to consider, and does not, in my opinion, procedurally create an issue for you in terms of an amended application. Lastly, many of the letters have accused my clients of building this and seeking forgiveness after the fact through a variance. That, in fact, is not the case. A building permit was issued for the construction that occurred, and it was only enclosing down the permit when the city asked for revised plans, that the city flagged this issue about the enclosure of the equipment. So my clients weren't aware of it until the, after it, as I said, the building permit was being closed. With that, I'll stop here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Madam Chair, am I coming through okay? Thank you, last name is Bronskill, first name David. We are the solicitors for Lisa Schiff, who's the owner of the property at 27 Bernard, which is to the rear. And we did submit a correspondence, which has our mailing address on it, Madam Chair. Thank you. I have to start by saying I'm not sure exactly what it is I'm now responding to in terms of these options being on the table. to in terms of these options being on the table. And this is, I think, case in point, why consultation by applicants, especially in the era of COVID, is so important. We simply do not have the ability now to comment on these options, which in fact would require revised plans and conditions to secure in the event that any of the options were actually deemed to be acceptable or appropriate by the neighbors and the committee. I think the message therefore to send to this applicant is a refusal and ask them therefore to negotiate and consult with the neighbors as part of any appeal process that they may seek to implement. The reason I think ultimately a refusal is warranted is based on the four tests and I will briefly deal with them. But the notion that this is an after the fact issue raised by closing a permit is in fact incorrect. My client discovered this construction when it was occurring. She expressed concerns to me at that time. And we went back and looked at the initial committee of adjustment decision. Nothing was there for this. And we actually also pulled the build it, building permit drawings because they are residential and publicly available that are referenced in Mr. Rendell's letter, building permit 19108765 HVA 02 MS. I have those drawings in front of me right now. They do not show this rooftop structure. So a revision was sought because the applicant constructed it and a revision of the plans was required to show it. But this is an after the fact construction. Now, I, I recognize that the committee still has to deal with the variance as is. But as I indicated in our letter, the advantage of an illegal construction like this and then requesting forgiveness is after the fact, is that members of the community and the committee actually get to see what it would look like. And this is an anomaly in the immediate context. And that's what we have raised in our letter. Immediate context, as this committee well knows, is important language out of the neighborhood policies in the official plan. We have to respect and reinforce the neighborhood, which includes both the broader context and the immediate context. And I think there is unanimity between me and Mr. Rendell that there is nothing like this on Tranby, no other height ref, variances on Tranby. Everything cited by the applicant is on other streets. And as we note in our letter, they are distinguishable based both on their location and adjacencies. This is a significant rooftop structure. The variances should be approved because it does not respect and reinforce the existing character of the neighborhood. It doesn't respect and reinforce the existing zoning bylaw. It does cause visual impacts both from the street and from my client's property that are unacceptable planning impacts. And it's frankly not appropriate or desirable for the use of the land when this type of mechanical space could have been more thoughtfully integrated into the home or on the rooftop, perhaps through one of the options that the applicant is now suggesting. And that is why ultimately we submit that the committee should decline the requested variances. Those options may have merit, but it is simply too late for us now to be able to evaluate them. This structure sticks out. It is not in keeping with the neighborhood. And what is proposed should be refused. The options should not be considered. And perhaps future discussions and consultation could then occur later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? I'm representing myself and my wife. My name is Mark Sabara. I live at 31 Bernard Avenue, it, which is right, almost right to the, behind and to the, would be the east of the property. And we have direct sightline views of the fourth floor after the fact, that, for the illegal structure that was built. And my comments with regards to this after the fact minor variance is included in the letter that I submitted to the committee. And I'd like to thank the committee for taking time to review the letter and take into consideration my opinions. As far as I'm concerned with regards to the, with regards to the, the planning act and the four tests, I agree 100% with the previous speaker who represents Lisa Schiff, my neighbor. And from my point of view, one of the main questions I had in concern was if they were putting in mechanical equipment that required to be protected from the elements, why was it not put in on the other floors of the house? Because they did get a minor variance to increase the size from one times to 1.4 times. So the main concern I have is they appear to be trying to put the mechanical equipment somewhere and increase their amount of living square footage, which I think they should have taken more effort into locating that equipment into one of the existing three floors of the basement. My second point is that the unapproved structure is visually destructive for all residents on the south side of Bernard. A lot of us have direct sightline views of it. Number, number three, the unapproved enclosure is not consistent with housing in immediate vicinity. I can see the rooftops of many, many houses on Tranby and Bernard. Absolutely none of them have fourth floor enclosures or fourth floor structures protecting mechanical equipment. Finally, I don't think this after the fact minor variance application, I think it will set a bad precedent for the neighborhood and encourage many different residents to choose to put mechanical on the roof, put an enclosure, and then ask for, ask for approval after. And that will really change the entire neighborhood. I think the key point to this is to create, is to work with 42 Tranby to come up with reasonable solutions. From my point of view, my, my first solution would be completely removing the structure and placing it with, within the, one of the existing three floors of the house. I think if that is not something that the committee or 42 Tranby wants to do, I would suggest that, that the committee of adjustments at least deferred for three months on the condition that 42 Tranby provides multiple, minimum three options to be negotiated between the community, the immediate neighbors, immediate vicinity, and the COA. I understand that the, the applicant representative has presented some options, but having listened to him for five minutes, I'm not able to effectively review them and consider them such limited amount of time. So I'm suggesting as a reasonable solution for a three month deferral on conditions that minimum three options are presented to all the community for us to review and discuss. I think that the rest of my concerns are seen in the letter, but I think the ones that I brought up are the key ones that would be relevant to the committee. Thank you very much for your time.
Right. In terms of Mr., both Mr. Bronskill and Mr. Sorbera, I do sense in their comments a willingness to consider options, which I have prepared. I did submit to the committee with drawings. I only had contact information from Mr. Bronskill. So he's seen the plans that I'm talking about, but unfortunately, you can't see them nor can Mr. Sorbera. So those plans do address the, the visual impact of the enclosure at the present height. As I indicated, it reduces the height to half of that. So it is less visible simply through that. And that reduces the visual impact, which is a concern of Mr. Bronskill's clients as well as Mr. Sorbera. Again, that option is there. I think it's, if committee, I think committee could approve the enclosure with a condition on a maximum height that would address that option. I'm unfortunately, because of the virtual nature here, I have no ability to get direction from my client about a deferral of the application. So I guess I need to leave that in the committee's hands at the moment.
I would agree with you, Madam Chairman. I have a question for Mr. Rendell. Of the options that were mentioned, one of them was to purchase different kind of equipment and that doesn't require weather protecting, in which case there would be no enclosure. That would effectively remove the variance. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Niffle. It would remove the variance. However, again, that equipment could be larger, higher, unenclosed, potentially visual and acoustic impacts from that.
But currently.
But yes, I mean, it would remain removing this equipment and getting outdoor equipment capable to be located outdoors.
And there's nothing in the box.
Also made, why isn't this equipment in the house? Again, the mechanical plans approved by the city were always based on this equipment being on the roof. And I'm advised by my clients that there, it was, there wasn't space within the house or the basement to put this equipment in. So the system was designed mechanically for the equipment and the air to flow from the roof.
If you are satisfied with your message, press one to.
Yeah, I'm not in support of a deferral.
I, I agree for all the comments that were already raised. I think we've spent too much time on this and there is ample time to consult. So I think we should deal with the application.
Just, just a quick comment in terms of having been adequate time to comment. The, it wasn't until the objection letters had come in that my client pursued these other options, which again required consultants, mechanical consultants and others to confirm in fact that the option of reducing the height of it was feasible. And again, that took time. It wasn't in place. So I could tell you that it could be done for sure until yesterday in fact. So the schedule of the hearing and, and the need to get reliable information to confirm that option didn't allow for the kind of consultation.
Madam Chairman, I appreciate Mr. Rendell's effort to try and find a resolution to the problem. The option of approving the variance with a height limit, I think, is, is problematic because the height limit is not something that the community is able to visualize at the present time and, and haven't, for a variety of reasons, haven't had the opportunity to, to, to consider before today. I think of the options that were presented, the one that Mr. Rendell suggested, where, whereby a different equipment would be purchased that wouldn't require a closure is the best solution. And that would in fact remove the need for the variance. I'm inclined to support that. And with that in mind, I would like to bring forward a motion that the application be refused, which in effect is one of the options that was presented.
I, I'd like to jump in for a second. I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors and these kind of last minute attempts by the applicant to, to great, create some sort of compromise. But I, I'm actually supportive of the application as it is. I, I know there's been a lot of hyperbole about people talking about destructive views. And I, I honestly don't see that. It's a, it's a very small structure, hundreds of feet away from other views, from the viewpoints, I think. And it's, I think it's relatively well hidden. I mean, just picturing what that would actually look like from, from a neighbor's window. It's a, it's basically like two people standing on a roof. I think you'd get used to that. So I, I support the application as is.
Um, I, I think it would be better if the, the applicant could reach a negotiated, you know, settlement with the neighborhood residents. I don't personally find the structure to be overwhelmingly large. I do see that it does not fit within everything that's going on because there are no other structures like that on roofs in the vicinity. So I am a little torn on this one. I think a refusal in this case would give them an opportunity to come up with a better solution, whether or not it be no enclosure or a reduced size of an enclosure. So based on that, I think something can be negotiated that would satisfy everybody. So I'm going to, I am in favor of a refusal on that basis. Sorry. Yes, I'm seconding the motion to refuse. Different reasons, but I'm seconding it.
That's right.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Gary Derbich. I'm the owner of the property.
No.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make a few comments. I think this one is very, very straightforward. I mean, if you read the variance just itself, you're thinking, oh, it's, the rear setback is at zero, but it's only for a small portion where the lot is angled. So I, I noted that the laneway, I think dead ends around that spot anyway. So I don't think there'll be any impact on any of the neighbors. So I'm in support of the application. I don't know if my colleagues have any comments, but I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval on that basis. Just about to jump in and say that. Yes. Sorry about that. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Oh, hi. My name is Konstantin Alexiev and I'm an agent for homeowners at 42 Stratmore Boulevard.
No. Madam Chairman, this is a very straightforward application as you've already indicated. I, I don't see any difficulties with it. I noticed that there, there's another enclosed porch quite close by. I think within three doors. I don't think what's proposed is in any way inconsistent with what exists in the community. I don't see there being any negative impact, so I'd like to move approval subject to the planning department's condition that there be a limitation on the variance that applies only to the porch.
Hello, everyone. My name is Allison Millen and I'm the agent representing the homeowner Neil Follett at 23 Sanford Avenue. Yeah, so it looks like the proposed garage is 1.27 meters or six feet from the center of the laneway and the minimum allowed is 8.2. This is something that we would, we would be willing to concede on if we absolutely had to. It does really impact the project and if there's any way that we could keep it at the allowable 2.5, that would be, that would be unbelievably helpful for us during this process. Yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Correct. Um, no, the height would remain the same, the required minimum, well, the required minimum rear lot setback, that would remain and the proposed is two stories. Yes, no, the other, the other variances would remain the same.
I have one question. I'm, I'm just wondering if that decrease in the size of the garage would impact the, the size of the parking space to be an undersized?
I would shift, I would shift it into the property. I would take, if, I would just move the existing structure and shift it into property. So all the, the maximum allowable, allowable GFA would remain the same. The garage would stay two stories. I'd still be able to pull the car in. It would just take 2.5 feet out of the backyard essentially.
Okay, but that wouldn't trigger a, you know, soft landscaping variance?
Shouldn't. I believe we're over on our soft landscaping substantially with the, yeah.
It, it looks like a fairly deep lot. Is that correct? I was just looking at the survey. It looks like a very, the lots on that side look very deep. I don't know what the depth is. I didn't get, you know, a chance to look at that, but.
It is a huge lot and it's predominantly green space. We have a deck off the back, but essentially other than that, it's, it's all considered soft landscaping.
And I'd like to just confirm that the, I know it's, storage is the, the use for the second floor of the garage, but just to confirm that there's not an intention for this to be used as habitable space.
No, there is no plumbing going in there. It is not a livable space. It is a, a storage solution.
Thanks. I'll start off. I, I think this is a reasonable project and I think that the height is, is well-managed. I think the most of the kind of second floor is within the roof line. And so I think it, the massing is, is not imposing. But I would, I would be inclined to support transportation's request to deny variance request number one. I'll just go ahead and make a motion. I move approval of this, this application except for variance request number one, subject to urban forestry number two. And I'd also like to include a condition that it not be used for habitable space.
Yeah.
I'm in support of all of that. I just had a quick question though. Because my, my issue was the, the center line of the lane and setback, proper setbacks. Does that impact variance three at all? Or will it still be 0.31 meters from the rear south lot line? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I am. That, I'm Adam Tom, the agent and architect for the project.
No.
No. I'm happy to start. I, I think this is a really nice project and I think that it's been designed really sensitively, both for the numbers to the north and also to the street. I think it adds good intensification onto a main street. And I'm keeping the, the commercial unit is, is an important and positive element too. So the variances are minor and I think that the, the architect made a, a real attempt to design within the bylaw and I think that came through. So I'll move to approve this project subject to planning's condition that the, that the development proceed substantially in accordance with February 3rd submitted drawings.
I'll second it.
This is Craig Race, the agent for the owner. Sure. Yeah, if you could please pull up, we have a brief that includes a few visual exhibits. Yes, exactly. So the application before you is, seeks to replace an existing rear addition on home. It's highlighted in blue, both the existing and the proposed are one story. Next page, please. So the application seeks only one minor variance for building depth. And the proposed depth is 20.88 meters. The existing depth is already 18.55, so it's already over the minimum requirement as are both neighbors and the majority of houses on the street. But we're seeking an increase of 2.3 meters. Next page, please. So again, this is just a single-story form we're seeking here. A couple of character elements I want to highlight. The rear yard patio space is at grade. There is no elevated deck. So that was done by the architect to minimize any potential for overload can keep the applicant's space as private as possible. Also, the rooftop of the addition is not accessible and it does not align with the second floor, so it cannot be used as a deck. Although it is worth noting, both this project and the House to the North already have third-floor decks. But nonetheless, the roof of the new addition will not be used. Next page, please. So the highlighted houses on this context map are existing structures that are already deeper than the proposal. So all these houses are at least 20.88 meters deep and the majority are quite a bit deeper, including a few houses that are up to 23 meters deep. So we really designed it to try to be in keeping with the existing character of the neighborhood. There are actually a lot more houses that are beyond the minimum requirement of 17 meters. Basically every house from 70 Howland to the south are all above the minimum requirement of 17 meters. Next page, please. So we have a couple images of two adjacent neighbors. The image on the left is the properties to the north. You can see they established a character in a single-story rear addition. The image on the right is, the larger addition is two houses to the south and you can see the immediate house to the south also has a small sloped roof addition on the back. So again, we're really following the existing character of the neighborhood. Next page, please. The owners of 68 have reached out to 19 of their immediate neighbors prior to this application. As a result of that, we've gotten nine letters of support that you should have on file. It's also worth noting, we didn't include this in the report, but the application was reviewed by the Annex Residence Association and they did not have comments. Although one of the sitting members of the RA does live behind this application and they did sign the letter of support. Next page, please. Sorry, back to the letter. So just go to one of the previous pages. I'll just summarize by saying that I personally think the architect did a great job with this application. They, it's certainly modest and although it increases the existing space, it does not trigger any variances that are not already triggered by the existing structure. It clearly passes the four tests. In my opinion, it's respectful, thoughtful and a very modest and future-proof design on a street where the majority of homeowners have already constructed much larger rear additions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one. Could we, could we get the existing depth, please?
Certainly. The existing depth is 18.55 meters.
Thank you.
So it's an increase of 2.3 meters.
I have a brief, a brief question, please. This, it's a one-story structure, but it's quite high. Can you speak, I think 14 feet, if I'm right? Can you speak to the reasons why that, why it's, it's so high for a one-story addition?
Certainly. It's just a continuation of the existing ground floor ceiling plan. So the existing addition has a sloped roof and it does have a fairly pinched ceiling. So it falls about a foot higher than the existing ground floor ceiling height, but otherwise it's just a continuation of the existing level of the home.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Yes. Both of us will speak. I'll start. Thank you.
Good morning. Ken Finkelman is my name.
And I'm Rachel Lowe. 70 Howland. Yes. We live at 70 Howland in the other half of the semi from 68 Howland, which is directly to the south of us. We were not consulted by our neighbors at 68 Howland, although they have proposed an addition which directly affects us, blocking the light from the south on our porch and garden. As you can see from the plans, we are the only neighbors directly affected as there are driveways on either side of our homes and the neighboring, neighboring buildings are multi-unit dwellings with parking lots, not gardens. Although I had requested them, we only received the plans for 68 Howland on November 1st, the same day the owner circulated a letter of non-objection for neighbors to sign. We wrote a letter to her detailing our objections and suggesting we find a compromise, but they did not reply. The proposed addition extends the length of the house. They're saying it's 3.88 meters beyond the maximum allowable permitted depth of 17 meters. The addition extends, and the issue is the size of the addition. The addition extends six feet, which is 1.8 meters beyond our porch. The addition rises 14 and a half feet high, 4.4 meters, which is, is also three, over three and a half feet beyond what our porch is. It's constructed of brick and according to the plans is built on the property line. The impact of this proposed structure is that it will cut off the south light to our porch and to the deck and planters immediately adjacent to our porch. We have submitted site elevation and photos attached to our objection. Ken Finkelman purchased and renovated 70 Howland in 2002, working with architect John Tong and gardener Graham Bekest to design a house and garden that takes advantage of the sunlight and the natural setting of the property. The shade garden created from a mud patch covered in garbage was designed to protect and embrace the large existing maples and the shade-loving plants below. This occupies the back two-thirds of the garden. The sunny third portion of our garden is the area closest to the house, lit all day by sun from the south. The proposed 16.5-foot extension will prevent us from enjoying the southern light in the porch and on our deck. We will instead be thrown into shade, looking at the brick wall. It is not clear whether we will have enough light- It is not clear whether we will have enough light to grow the herbs we enjoy and regularly use. We've attached a photo collage of the rear elevation to illustrate the shade impact. That's number four. The city's existing zoning bylaw only allows seventeen-meter-deep building, which would protect this deck and garden. An addition built with the regulations would not obstruct our light and ruin our garden and deck for us. We put a great deal of effort over the years into creating and maintaining a beautiful garden to serve as a sanctuary in this urban setting. Ken is now retired and spends more time in the garden than ever before. While there may be additions of, examples of additions on the street that do extend beyond the seventeen-meter limit, such as sixty-four Howland, there are also examples of proposed additions that extended beyond the limit that have not been approved, such as thirty-six and thirty-eight Howland. While there may be precedents, each case must be considered individually, as you are doing today. Yep. Do you want to say something? In our specific case, the proposed extension will block the light in our garden, adversely affecting our quality of life and the value of our property. A number of our neighbors agreed with our objection, which we actually had to pull together in a week. Okay, same one thing.
Hi. I can try to say something very large, very quickly. This is about sunlight, and I didn't realize that the sun was so important until it's taken away from you. This is, in this case, it could be taken away. In the, the creation myth, which I don't necessarily believe in, written thousands and thousands of years ago, it starts with the first day, and God created what? Light. So sunlight has always been an important part of humanity. Now we know differently about the creation. Creation now is biological. Everything that lives on this earth is a biological extension of the sun. The sun is incredibly important. Every blade of grass, every person, every animal, every insect is a biological expansion of the sun. This is a very important issue. I didn't think it was until it was being taken away from me. Thank you for letting me speak.
Certainly. So if you could actually pull that letter back up, that would be great. So the first thing we just want to note is that these neighbors were the opposition letter with the images of the neighbor's backyard. That was very useful, actually. Yeah, that one. Yes, yes. So just to note, these neighbors were approached last spring by the homeowners. So there is some history of correspondence there. In addition, you can see that by the image, especially on the bottom left, they have an existing addition that extends beyond what's currently being proposed, that roof on the left. So, you know, our proposal is certainly not out of scale with what's already constructed in our rear yard. Not to mention the lots are a hundred and fifty feet deep here, so there's ample rear yard space that will have plenty of sun. I also just want to address, on the next page here, there's a photo collage with a shadow line. Sorry, it must be the next one. There's a, an elevation with a shadow line across it. That is not accurate. That shadow line would not extend across the face of the addition, the way it's drawn. That addition with the photo on it extends to just within a few feet of the end of the proposed addition. But going beyond that, I mean, the, the size of the addition is very modest in weight and in depth. And there's plenty of rear space, so we'll still be getting a lot of sun. We actually specifically, or it was specifically designed to only be one-story in order to be respectful of sunlight for the neighbors. Hopefully, it's fairly obvious in the design of the addition that we are trying to be respectful of the views and sunlight of the neighbors here. Is, sit back slightly, trying to get a dimension. If you go to the site plan, it shows it. So there, and this plan actually does not show the roof extending off the north edge of their one-story addition that goes beyond our structure.
I, I have a question picking up on a point that Mr. Reed made earlier. The, the, I don't have difficulty with the depth, but the addition is very high. And if you look at the rear elevation of, of the two properties, the adjacent property has windows and a door and a roof, and the roof of the proposed addition is considerably higher. They're both additions to the same style of building. And the answer to why the addition was so high was because that's the current clearance for the main floor. But it would seem to me that the clearance for the main floor in both houses would be the same. I'm still, I'm still confused, as I gather Mr. Reed was, about why the addition is as high as it is. If it were not as high, it seems to me some of the concern about shade would be diminished. And, and I think that would be desirable. But I, I don't understand why the addition is as high as it is. And I, I'm questioning the response, which was that it just extends the existing internal ceiling. I, I do appreciate that the floors are, it appears, one step higher in your building than in the adjacent owner. But I, I just, I'm wondering if there is anything that could be done to reduce the, the height of the addition, which was the, the point that Mr. Reed raised at the beginning of the discussion.
Sure, so this can perhaps be clarified by the building section, which is in the drawing package. I don't know if that can be pulled up. And you're correct that the addition will have a ceiling height that is taller than the existing house by about two feet. There we go, that's a good exhibit of it.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, also, we are not seeking any variances for height or for gross floor area or for parent, parent main wall heights. So that's, I, I understand by looking at, but looking at the project in isolation is one thing, but certainly looking at the prevalence of rear additions on the street, even as close as two houses to the south. In addition, beyond that, where houses are considerably deeper than this application with two-story and three-story rear additions, this is significantly more modest than is prevalent in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, well, I'll jump in to start. I think this is, I mean, on its face, it's not, it doesn't look like a, a big, a big deal, right? We've got this one variance. And I'm, like Carl, I'm not so concerned about the depth, but I think the impact of the depth is really enhanced because it's a very tall one-story. But also because the, the addition is right up to the lot line. And I think the, the applicant's correct in saying there are many, many rear additions in this, in this neighborhood. But usually what we see is a step back from either side to, to kind of lessen the, the immediate impact on, on the immediate neighbors. And this really, this actually widens, it goes wider than the house. So I, I usually, these kind of, these kind of applications, I think, are, are quite straightforward and supportable. But this one, because of its lack of step, setback, stepping away from the neighbors to the north and, and the height of the actual structure, I, I can't support this.
I'm inclined to agree. I, I don't, again, I don't think the depth is as big an issue had the addition been designed in a slightly different way. I'm concerned that the height that's proposed, which is not a variance, appreciate that, makes the, the bulk of the, of the addition look much bigger. And it does, in fact, impact on the ability of the neighbors to get sunlight. So I'm also not in favor of the application at this point.
Sure, I move a motion to refuse the application.
I'd second it.
Good morning, this is Lynn Houston.
No. Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm supportive of this application. I think the, the existing pitched roof, which was respected in the, in the application, effectively integrates the, the proposal in, more into the community than, than if we were looking in a flat-roofed building. I don't see there being a negative impact on immediate neighbors or the, or the context of the community. And I would, I would be pleased to move approval subject to the planning department condition, which is limiting variance number one to only the third-story addition. And also that it be constructed in accordance with the plans that we have before us.
Yeah, good morning, my name is Andrew Galovina.
No.
Madam Chair, this one is very straightforward. It looks like they're just increasing the dormer width at the front and popping out the back, adding a small addition. I am in support of the application. I think it, in my view, meets the four tests, and there are really, I don't see any negative impacts on adjacent neighbors. So I'm happy to bring forward a motion for approval without any conditions.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Hi, Vanessa speaking on behalf of Howard Dixon. Vanessa Cope, property manager for fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred O Street. I'm not the speaker.
Where Howard is?
No, no.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm here, thank you. Yeah, yeah, certainly, my, my name is Rick Matelson, I'm, I'm agent for the, for the applicant.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Yes, you want to object?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 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 thank you. This is, this is in, in order to, to store plus, plus basement apartment building. There are presently eleven suites in the, in the apartment building. And there is a, is a space in the basement, which up to this point has, has been used for some, for basically, basically storage for the, for the, 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 the building owner. The intention is to convert that space to a twelfth unit. There's no proposal for any kind of exterior changes to the building as, as a result of this. This is simply taking advantage of some underused space in the basement to create additional unit. The variance, which is, which is before you, is in respect of parking. The, the addition of this space would require one, one additional parking space. There are presently, there's a, there's a, there's a garage arrangement, accesses via lane to, to, to the rear of the property. And there are presently three garages at the rear. From a zoning standpoint, it's considered, it's considered to be three parking spaces because the, the size of the garages is such that each one is technically only one parking space. In fact, there's, there's, there's dysfunction in the ability to fit two cars into, into each space. But it's, but from a, a zoning standpoint, it's, 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 it's three cars. The, the proposal is such that, that we, we feel there will, there will, no, no impact on the, on the, on the community from the standpoint of this. Our understanding is that there is no parking issue presently with the, the building. This certainly is, is, is a street which is, which is, which is very well-served by transit opportunities and so on. And, and in addition, we've been in discussion with the neighbors, and we have letters of support from the, from the property owners on each side of the building. The committee has in their, in their package, a, a letter of support from the one property owner to the, to the west. We have a, a second letter, which came in after the deadline from the property owner to the, to the east. So the, the committee hasn't, hasn't, hasn't seen that because it came in late. So that, that really is the, is the project, that's the background of the project. As, as I say, there is no change that's proposed to the exterior of the building. This is simply a case of taking an existing underused space and, and creating an additional residential suite there. Clearly is lots of, lots of, of, of demand in this, in this, this, this part of the, of the city for residential rental opportunities. We, we think there is no question that it's, it's something which, which, which is a benefit to the community. And we think that the impact is, 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 is really nothing, and that it meets the four tests of the planning act. So we, we would ask for your, your support, and I'd be happy to answer the questions.
I have a question. My understanding from your presentation is that you, notwithstanding the fact that the garage has three spaces shown, that in fact you can accommodate six cars, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you tell me, the variance is to add one space, but add to what? What is the parking requirement for the existing building as it is now?
If the parking requirement were to be, be calculated, it, it would require ten spaces.
Okay, so you require nine now, and the additional Okay, so you require nine now and the additional, the additional unit would, would bring you to nine. Sorry, you have eight and then you would have one additional for nine. Is that correct?
No, I, I would need to confirm that with the, it's, 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 it's in the staff comments. I believe that we, we, we present and require ten, that we would present, require ten with the existing condition. And the additional one would, would bring, that's my understanding.
Okay, and you have under bylaw three, but in practice six.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I am here. Thank you. Our main concern is that if the additional space is not added, that his, his tenants will don't park in our plaza, which we are already currently having issues with parking with our current staff that work there and also people in the neighborhood are using our plaza as parking. So we'd like to know if he, if they're going to work on adding additional parking to their unit. Fourteen hundred O'Quinn Drive. Yes, the property management at that, at that address. Correct. Understand. Thank you. Yep.
Yes, yes, thank you. There, we, there's the, the nature of the, of the, of the, of the site and so on. It's that is such that there is no, no, no opportunity to add, to add additional parking spaces. There is a, there is a, there's a lane to the rear of the, of the site, which is six meters wide. There, there has been on occasion some people who, who tend to park in the lane that of course is, that, something which is, which is of course not encouraged. But the property is, is, is very tight and there are no opportunities to, to, to add, add, add additional parking. I can certainly understand the comments, the, the comments made. I, I can understand that, that the, that the, that, that people from the mall would of course not, not be, not, not be happy with, 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 with parking in their, in, in their property, which, which was not to their benefit. I think that the chance that this unit itself, or that the addition of this unit itself, will create an, a, a demand there. And that, that will, will be some, some direct relationship between those two. I think that that is, is most likely very, very unlikely. As, as I indicated, this, these are streets and this is a, a community which is, which is very well, well-served by, by transit. And the nature of, of these, of these apartments and these suites is that typically these kinds of tenants wouldn't be tenants that would be having their own vehicles, but would typically be transit-reliant sort of, sort of tenants. So I think, I think the chance of, of the, of there being any impact on the, on their mall from this unit is very, very low.
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm very familiar with the site and the area, as indicated by the applicant. It is very well-served by transit. I, there is no opportunity for adding an additional parking space to the property. I think there is a need for additional housing. I think this is a, an easy win, an easy way to provide an additional suite to the, to the housing in the city. I don't feel that there will be a, an impact, a major impact into the area by providing the additional suite. Therefore, I, I would move approval of the application without, without condition.